I'm hearing a little bit.
Hello? I can hear, I just heard for a second anyway.
Whoever.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yay.
Hey.
Sound it. Yes. And I don't know why. Confused. Cool. I'm sorry, I don't remember the name. Yes, thanks. All right. We should be able to do business now.
Okay. Oh, we're down on the big screen.
It doesn't matter.
Actually, I thought, you know, like there are forty people.
Regals on everything.
So we don't have to have this up. If it's in the way, but if you want to see what's. Well, there's one there too.
Is there any way we could get? The email up there and see. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can read up there.
So that'd be good. Okay. So for Charles or whoever out there. So it's just. Charles is the only one who's zoning it.
Jenny.
Yeah.
Sounds sound. As you wish.
Yeah. I need. I have time to find it, I'll go ahead now.
Oh, yeah.
I open it up. Everything has like seven hundred nested things. Oh, you didn't want the agenda, you wanted the notes that you sent.
Oh, right.
Which is my.
For you to.
Got it.
Send me. But you can see it on the big thing.
Nice.
You know, it should be the.
Yep, this one right here.
Actually, that's good too, but like. The actual image of the. That I sent you the email, it had an image.
That?
Yes, no, the one, uh, active book with drawings.
Which is all you sent me.
Ah, okay. We can make that work. Yeah, but first let's do, uh, first let's call the meeting to order, I feel ready. Think we're ready to call the order, yeah, okay. Probably meeting for the fourth meeting, five, sorry. Technical difficulties. And. First thing is to see about approving the minutes of February.
Nine.
Uh, those minutes. Basically said we had a discussion and nothing of substance came from that discussion. Basically, we said, well, whatever we had to do wasn't covered, now I forget exactly.
I think that was Brent Barkley's storage.
That's right, storage facility, and we said, well, it's, it doesn't fall under any special category here, and so he's gone back to that. So not expecting anybody to remember that.
Did somebody? I guess there was just, was, did I, is that twenty comments?
No, there's no comment to make on that, so I think that because it is a. Has no impact in the future, we can either approve it or table it permanently. Let's approve it, let's approve it if we can. Motion to second. Okay. Jenny, you okay with that? You won't even remember the committee then, so I guess that's okay. So, yeah, all right, so we will consider those approved as they are. But then comes the second situation, which is the proposal to have a different sign size. Um, remembering that we don't care about what a sign says, we have no control over what it says. Or even how it says it, but just size and color. The color isn't the issue, I don't believe in this situation, so, um, I'd like to turn it over to Brooks to explain.
Okay, thanks for. Paying attention here, we'll go through this. Two things are clear here. Three or four things actually, which is why it's before the board. Um, one of them is, thanks to Tim sort of attended this, and you already know this, was this new sign code and new zoning. I actually wasn't aware of it, this project's been, we worked for four years. It actually didn't get off the ground until last winter, and it's finished. Virtually now, this is, this moving the sign is the last piece of the puzzle. But that new sign code, when we gave Tim the drawings, he said this isn't. Precisely matching the new sign code, and I said, okay, that's interesting, but he was, he was correct, we'll get to that later. The second thing is. It's an existing building and an existing sign that we're repositioning and redesigning. It's not a. It's not a new sign in the sense that there never was a sign out there to begin with. And the third thing I'll talk about is the way the zoning and the sign code are written, this is. A perfect example of it doesn't fit. I'll explain why that. Is true and why we're asking for the variance, if I believe is justified in asking for. So, background, this is the community health center in the north country, where it's been for the last. Thirty-five years on the corner of, you know, Route eleven and Thomas Lane out there. Of course, the one story parts from the eighties, the two-story. Parts from two thousand. And this project was a renovation. Of the entrance and registration area in the middle of the building. Their clinics all remain. The way they are, dental and primary care and behavioral health and physical therapy and a number of other things. But this project was redesigning. The entrance, exit, registration, waiting, all that stuff. It's actually modeled after the Augsburg facility, which we did four years ago, which. They really like and therefore wanted to circle back here. And make this twenty, you know, two-year-old design updated. So that's really what the project was all about. That entrance and exit and lobby. So. Looking at it on elevation, well, this is the existing building. That's a hundred and seventy feet long. The old Westbury Park, the twenty-twenty two-story part. This was the area that was being redesigned to focus. You know, the entrance and exit there and, and, and expand that a little bit, you know, in this footprint, there's a ball on it. The, the old sign was in the gable end of the one-story building, that's a community health center, you know, in big letters. The Augsburg sign looks like this. In Augsburg, it is roughly that size, and that's the position that we'd like to put it in, centered over the entrance and exit. To draw people's attention to, you know, heading there when they drive into the parking lot. The. We, we sort of, uh, here's a picture of what the sign used to look like. That's since been taken down. But we, interesting, interesting, we, we sort of got into trouble when. When Tim called up and said. You're not reading the sign code. Like, hmm, okay, so the things that were interesting, particular were these new zones. Which, I guess we're in the GMU.
Yes, general mixed use.
Yes, so. It allowed sixty square feet, it says one square foot, three hundred foot of building with a maximum of sixty, but we're a hundred and seventy feet long. But we're not allowed more than sixty. The existing, also, I, I acknowledge that the way of measuring signs has been. Updated and clarified instead of sort of the letter area, it's now the whole. Background and all that kind of thing, which is reasonable, but it's a matter of. Definition. So, the, the existing sign area here was. You know, was roughly, you know, eighty-nine, ninety square feet. It's been there for twenty. This one is also that size, I think it's about eighty-six square feet.
I think that's the number that you're. Eight, seven, maybe.
Well, when I calculated twelve times. Yeah. Seven, three, it came out to eighty-seven square feet, but you had eighty-five square feet on the.
Little circle like that.
Could be a hundred and sixty square feet.
And we also made the entrance and the exit sign, which we've added, you know, now, so. That's the first requirement, well, one interesting thing that. Tim noted was that in that. Wall sign, quote unquote, it says, no wall sign, we extend above the window sills of the second story. And there's a cute little picture of a downtown building that was here, you know, with a little pizzeria underneath and a couple apartments above. They were out in the suburbs, yeah, a purpose-built two-story office building. But we're above the window sill in the second story, not, but not above any window sill. Of it's, oh, in other words, we didn't want it to go up over the windows.
Well, I agree with this completely, yeah, and so, so you're not going over a window there.
Why not?
You're not coming over a window, that's right.
It's up above, yeah. The window sills of the second story, right. You know, this is great. And one of my degrees is within design, and this is a beautiful downtown, like, pass it, and we all try to preserve them, but. We're out in the countryside here, this suburban building, and a two-story office building, so this doesn't make any sense, even though that's what it says.
But it's still in the GMU.
And, and that, right, so therefore, we come to you and you say, you're right, that doesn't make any sense, so in this case.
Right, in this case, this has to be okay, it's, you know, they're not, we don't have apartments up there.
Block and a window, and they don't have a pizzeria down here.
And the exit and entrance are okay because they are directional signs, directional assistance signs, and so they don't. Don't, I mean, if they were too big, we'd have to say no, but they aren't.
So there's a couple.
And actually, you added those.
Well, I just did that because of what we just, at, at this point in design now, you're just starting to move into the building, and they're saying, wait, how do people go, I don't get that many doors.
Actually, directional sign, I think almost wants to be portioned out, we just don't.
That's part of our variance, we're in a parking lot with, you know, a hundred and fifty cars in it, and people who have disabilities.
Right, so you want to have the visibility.
And we, when they're pulling in, we're going to see that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You want to have the most visible.
Yeah. These are ten-inch letters like these letters.
Yeah.
And sized proportionately to that. So, you know, the basis of the variance, or request, is that the existing sign is that size. And that will get bigger, right?
And if you had done this last year, we wouldn't have even had a meeting.
Which is right, but. But anyway. So that, that other sign had have been in the old code is above the cornice of the roof.
Yeah, these laws of all, I mean, well, you know, you can.
Not really above the cornice though, because it's in, it's on the, the gable end.
In this case.
You're not above the cornice of the wood, yeah, otherwise it'd be, uh, it'd be a loop sign.
Right.
Is it granted for that sign?
No, because obviously. Then you have this.
Actually, twenty years ago, there probably wasn't even a. We didn't even have a zoning law.
Where you, you were. And I did. Um. Brothers in two thousand. Where somebody was the one in charge of science in those days, he was the town supervisor, village supervisor.
Yeah, I take that.
It was all by book at that time.
It was. The little difference here is, this is a hundred and seventy-foot-long building, not a little pizza place down here. Right, so, you know, in proportion to the size of the facility, the sixty-square-foot limit that's in that GMU zone is. Too small, it's such a big building. We, this isn't commercial, I mean, if this was commercial and we needed signage for advertising, this would be a very different discussion.
Right.
So this is a modest request, I think, the ninety square feet, one sixty's allowed for a hundred and seventy-foot building.
Because it has no signage at all.
I mean, it's not an advertising, commercial situation, which is part of what the sign code is guarding against, is make sure you have big flashing lights there. You know, messing everything up. Yep, so it's institutional in that sense, but in, in the scale of the facility. The signage has to be in that scale.
Um, okay. Well, I would. Uh, invite anybody to ask any other questions who might have questions, I don't know how much you can see, Jenny. Did you see enough? We had enough of the idea?
Well. I got the idea.
Okay, and so, yeah, but you did hear that the difference is an old code. It was okay, a new code, it's, it's been made smaller.
Um, if we turn your laptop around.
This is, we see, um, that's the one.
Oh, that's the one that's, that's actually.
Well, you can see on that one too, you can see on all, anybody that's signed in.
You'll see those on that one.
Nope.
Sorry, that, there, it's very small there, they're.
Towards that.
Yeah. Bind stuff to cameras, they.
All things are being used.
Okay.
Okay.
They programs display, they can destroy theirs different from mine. Everybody has the option to change their display.
I could send you the email that Brooke sent me. But this this will work. That's basically what we're discussing. Um, the length of the building here is still a long building and that's a story that's here, existing. Yeah, they can see that pretty good.
Yeah.
And is, do you need the address? And not that it matters, at the top for Commerce Lane, does it have to be on there?
It lets people.
Well, you're doing the address.
Right, probably in Google Maps, people push their numbers and.
Okay.
As long as it's somewhere.
A little bit.
Yeah, necessary.
Okay.
Yeah, the people know they've got the right.
Yeah, we have the note.
And, um. Of course, it's called, um, you know, it's called Community Health Center now. You'll see on the old C P.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Um, okay, so. Uh, and it's not, you know, it's. It's not internally illuminated or flat, or anything. It's got these nice. And the traditional dome lights lighting it up.
Okay, and it's, if it were a. Free-standing sign this way, you'd have two sides that would say the same message every day, so it's two, so.
Up into that round.
Yeah, we're keeping the existing freestanding sign that they have out there.
Okay.
You know, they have the existing freestanding side is.
It's here, it's out here.
Oh, yes.
So there, there is one other. Thing that we do with signs for buildings that are set back from the main drag. But first, the buildings on the road has different plot. The next row back, which doesn't have the same advantage of being next to the road and a little harder to see, gets another ten percent. Size added to it. We've done that like, um, on the way into town out here with the. McDonald's and things up close to the road get a smaller sign, but set back a row or a distance like a. Parking lot now, they get a slightly larger sign, especially if it's forty-five miles an hour. Now, this is still third. True, that doesn't have that. No, but that's what we've done for variances in the past was. And sort of, um, unwritten, why we have justified it is that because being further away from the road is harder for people to see.
And that's further away from the road. Based on the fact that there's a building in front of it, not just that it's the distance from the street.
Right, um, although it does make it harder to see, you know, further over, but that's, but but the real idea is because. You have the chance to compete. When, you know, perspective, just plain perspective decreases the size.
What is the distance? I think it's like a hundred.
And that's right, I love it in fact, this is, I think, a modest request because it's not commercial, you know, not advertising, we're not trying to.
That's the commercial corridor is actually on the side of the road.
Yep, so this is a long way back and people have to kind of identify that that's. But if it was commercial, we would be arguing for a much bigger sign.
Shopping center with a drugstore and a liquor store and all that stuff.
Each one would have the sign they could have each of it. If you had, if you had.
Up to the sixty.
If you had subspecialties in there, you had a podiatry section and you had a dentistry section, then each of those could have a sign.
They're common signage point.
No.
It's it's in the code.
Yeah, they have, that begins to add up and it goes up more and more and more each.
So is the sign that's on the on the grass in front of the building near the street, is that? Up, is that larger or smaller in code? Does anybody know?
That's.
Right, that's a sign be made bigger and this one trading off some space.
Well, that's interesting. It's been there for years and it's meeting.
I don't really remember you can see.
It's even smaller. That's why it's not commercial, you know, you have, it's one of those things that. You have to be looking for it, but when we're looking for it, you have to find it. It's not where they're trying to catch you driving by a Dairy Queen and saying, we've got, you know, a special here today.
Right. Well, I'm just saying that because the argument going on now is that this is set far back and so that might be. Reason for having the larger sign on the building, but if the street sign, the sign on the street were larger. And that's closer to the street, that would catch people's attention more so than that.
But if you're a design point of view, one interesting thing is that they have gone, in my opinion, with a much more tasteful kind of sign here, because they like the Augsburg one we've done. And they're getting rid of the sort of bigger boulder. Plastic letters.
Right.
So this actually is more keeping with. The old style of these. Because Augsburg is downtown as well.
I like, I think you said the word classier.
Oh, yeah, I like it better.
And.
You might have to give them a variance on the exit.
If the board's worth sweet is is a rule, we would ask for that.
Yeah.
Big parking lot, people with disabilities trying to identify them.
Yeah, and it's, although it all looks like windows, you have to climb in a window in the entrance.
This would have hung down because this is a recess, you can't really see it. Well, no, sorry, yeah, that's a good point. The reason we need that sign is the doors are to the side. You don't see the door. This is, this is a cousin there, yeah. So the entry sign would be right there. We can see it. There's the doors sideways.
Yeah.
You gotta see it and then come in. And the same with the exit, because they they people wait for the buses or their rides.
Yeah, the ride will know where to pull up to pick them up.
Yes, so that entrance and exit will separate it as part of, also part of this whole flow for. Infection and health and contact and. Security and all those things. But that's. That's entrance and exit sign would be hanging from the beam that's holding up the roof. Direct people into this covered area and then they pop in the door.
Okay, well, good, I'm glad.
This will be bad, I'd rather people kind of find on the window. The two-dimensional roof, it's it's, which you're paying attention to, where's the door?
Actually. Actually, I was looking at the columns below grade. That's why the, uh, pudding you have under that, or just a roof corner.
Well, they're they're in, they're in the concrete.
Yeah, so.
This was a construction drawing that we stuck the signs on.
A little bit looking at the rest of it then. So, uh, let's see. The only reason to say no is to be adhering fully to the quote. The reasons to say yes are things like further distance, older eyes, need for direction. Classier look. Could be lots of different signs for different subspecialties that would be in there, so we could end up with more signage if we had a dental and a, like I say, other. People, other health providers within this, we could end up with a mall-type thing of of different size too, that would add up to more than eighty square feet or ninety. Whatever it is.
After sixty that's allowed and a ninety that is there now, we want to basically just replicate.
And, um.
A hundred and seventy-foot-long building.
Yeah.
Big place, so. I don't know, I can't vote.
I don't think we're reading the same note.
No. Where thing is is opening up for future other things, but like you said, it's not a commercial building, it's off the road. I personally don't have a problem.
It's non-competitive, but that's that's important. Um, although healthcare around here is getting pretty. We stay out that, we're just back in the middle. Um, so, okay, so then, so you see, this is the way it works, that what a code enforcement guy can't step outside the code. Do he just files and says no? And so, and then make it so that it's not up to him, and that's why the committee needs to decide that. What should be done and what's fair and right, and I'm thinking. So, um, anybody at at home think that you would have any, um, opposition to allowing this? No, okay. Um, and Charles is, uh, he's got, he's giving us the five-finger sign. I think that he was pretty comfortable with this too, from what I had heard, and we briefly spoken. I don't know, it's just, no, it's just his hand, no, it's just his hand for this, his cursor, it looks like that, but it looks like he's.
Usually that means you have a question, that he may have just hit it by accident. It's a reaction option.
You want to just run my call?
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
Answers.
Yeah, and go past them.
Making sure we do have a, we don't have any.
Happy to.
Oh, you're calling about them, you know, being in competition with other healthcare providers, of course, the slow rush, the regional thing is very complicated with the. Cat bus and bus, the museum and building and all that.
But, um, just for your information, there. There, we're working on more drawings right now, nothing to do with the sign.
But it's just where my cursor was, because I can use him.
These clinics. This winter now too, they're gonna put another six hundred thousand pounds of freshening. So they're investing in the community here.
Wow, nice.
Wow.
And the transient medical.
It's a good thing to have in town, with my beautiful buildings and everybody, you know. Let me put your hands full.
No, there was like. Is it, there's some kind of carport or something that they built down?
Yes, yes, that. But that's all been completed because they actually this plan. And that's been very successful. For the coded testing.
Yeah.
Oh, they'll drive them, test back during that.
Oh, yeah, they've been using that for more than. Oh, yeah. Just waiting on your, their final vote on the entrance was made, and I already watched this, because they. So much, they said we want this lot to look like this. Of course, there's no entrance. When they went from this one story to this bigger two-story, twenty years. Leave for them. But it's worked out now and then they built them a long facility and now they're enhancing, refreshing this one.
Yeah.
Well, there's a need for what they do.
Ah, yeah, that's for sure. And, um, this makes it look like a classier clinic. It just seems to me to be raising it up every time you do something, it raises it up.
Or she's a director, she's got a good vision for where it's going to make it be.
As planning people, we like to see this stuff.
Like shops almost.
Friendly and nice enough to date and still sort of panting flavor. We generally try to be either Adirondacky or kind of Victorian, kind of mix them together, not but. This and. Yeah, and this, well, this is clapboards and stuff, so.
As the residential.
And then the stone for the Adirondack, it just, yep, we want that, so. Okay, then, so we, um, I guess we actually need a motion to allow this and a second, and then we'll take a vote.
Second?
Okay, and that leaves Jenny to vote. Yep, she can vote.
Awesome, so do you bother to send us? Okay, he had his chance.
Can't hear you, Bill. We're voting to allow it, if that's okay.
Can he hear you?
You're good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, good man. All right.
Sorry, I had to turn up my mic. You're good.
Good, so with.
Okay, thank you, approved, thank you for a nice presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Sorry, you're better easily, you can't have to hold that up on the other side. Just bring this because it's so simple.
Yeah, we do, we didn't ask the one.
And then Tim. Rob's gonna call you tomorrow because your C O is conditional upon the.
So, yeah.
That's what we're through, we need that C O via Department of Health submission. On the. On the variance.
Is this it?
Yeah.
Send something back to, like, a, a form just saying that it was approved.
Okay.
But it first happened here. It should be, oh, you know, be. Uh, yeah, it'd be good to have something.
These ones for the town.
I will do a memo. I'll do a memo to you. On me as chair saying that this, uh, was approved for a maximum of ninety square feet. Yes, we'll call it that, ninety, because it's eighty-seven something.
That's the other exit.
Yeah, and, um, uh, that way you'll have that.
That'll be, that's a little documentation for me. You brought that clean C O.
Yeah, I do know the C O tomorrow.
Yeah, that's great, because now we've got, you know, that's the last piece of post, yes, about health stuff, which is. Now they can see patients.
All right, wow, thank you. So unusually brief and and bloodless.
Yeah, wow.
Yes.
I, I, uh, it seemed like a big deal to me.
Who's outside, who's been outside meeting going on at that time? So.
I got my kids and I'm trying to just stay away so you don't hear the screaming.
Any further business which may come before the board? Is there any other business?
There could be some future business. Probably, uh, talk about signage, I got this big packet from St. Lawrence, remember I talked about moon signage? There is, uh. Most of it is okay, but there's a couple of oddball ones that might be variances. That, uh, end up on outside of. So, and I already reviewed it with the, uh. The contractor.
Oh, yes, uh-huh.
And it's, it's a boatload of signage.
Well, most of it actually, they should be okay, they're like.
Free-standing signs that are like eight feet tall. They're basically like modelists.
Yeah.
And they're gonna be like directional, well, no, not really directional signs, but they say that. Uh, where things are. So one could argue with their directional sign, but they're actually a sign.
Yeah, a true sign. Um, yeah, we don't want them higher than would be allowed everywhere else.
Ten feet, but I said you gotta bring them down to eight.
Yeah.
So that's, but there's a couple of signs that are just in a. Uh.
There are any different.
Same houses, areas.
Yeah.
Residential multifamily and not on the E C campus.
All right.
So, uh, and I, I wrote down. Uh, eight feet, yeah. And then we go with that, I had a meeting with this woman, and we. Went, went through the code and, uh, there's a couple of other things I have to work out with her.
Okay.
So you had, so talking about directional signs, they have some really huge directional signs for parking and we have to work that out, so. Uh, for Appleton and places like that.
Okay, for Appleton, I suppose, but the rest of it, you buy a parking permit, you park in the same lot all semester.
No, it was just for like. People coming to, uh, attend an event.
Okay, yeah, but that's not ready for us, right?
No, it's, it'll probably be coming down the pike.
Okay.
You want, I'm just warning. And some oddball signage.
Anything that, uh, well, Tim, this may not be, but I'll look at you, but anything that would, um, be kind of complete streets concerning or concern complete streets at all?
That would.
Like, no, that, not the sign thing, obviously.
Or, I mean, we haven't heard anything, there's a new road going in on private land, but it's just to get to that solar project and so it's. A lot of driveway on their own land, they do anything.
In the town and goes to the village parcel on their land and then goes into the solar facility. I went through the code and I. Played devil's advocate, tried to find any way it could be, uh, restricted, and I couldn't find anything. I even looked into, uh. Accessory use. And it didn't regulate a road, it only regulated buildings, so I couldn't even do that, so I really tried. Did my due diligence to, you know, just to make sure I wasn't overlooking it. And I ran it by Jerry too.
Good, good.
And, uh, and then we thought. The reason this came up was that district is single-family. Uh, that it, that that road goes through.
Yeah.
And one was arguing, I think, some of the planning board people, uh, St. Lawrence County Planning Board said, say. For example, say they develop that parcel, the Cheeselys sold that, and that got turned into, say, a development. What would happen to that road? And we kind of determined that. The road would probably be a driveway off of any roads that were developed there. For, uh.
Yeah, for their own driveway, yeah.
Yeah, it would just be another road out of that district.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't affect anything. So.
As long as they didn't develop along it, then they have to turn it into a village road with, with water and sewer.
The one thing it is being. Uh, developed for. It's been, uh, for fire service, it's been big enough for and strong enough for fire trucks and the vehicles that. Will have to go in to build the full of the solar facility.
Will have to go in to build the full of the solar facility, so if it can accommodate the, the vehicles that can construct it, it can accommodate the fire service. And there's all the necessary turnarounds for fire trucks. And, you know, if they have to respond to a fire, right, so when they get in, they would gotta be able to come out.
Hmm, I think it's a twenty-foot clearance.
Yeah.
Twenty foot, where, where the maximum is sixteen in the town. Person too.
That its road will, it's not really, it's not, it's, it didn't seem like it can impact, and the reason I brought that up, the developer came to me and asked me. Do I see any problem like this? And I'm like, well, I'll have to see, I'll have to look for problems.
Time, I'll come up with something.
My homework, and then I finally said, let him back, I said, and so, he said, are we good? I said, we're, and I just wrote back, yes. So that's where we're at with that.
Okay, so we will.
That's pretty much off the record, I guess.
Oh, yeah, it's fine. We're done. We have, um, under their feet names, and then.
Most.
Good, thank you. But I have a goal with consensus, what do you think? Is this okay? Are we doing that in here?
Consensus about consensus.
If we get to some really contentious point, then it changes completely, but for these kinds of things, um. I wasn't too anxious to actually give that variance, I'd rather have it be smaller, except he made his points. And, and I thought that was true, that we were lucky that there aren't more reasons for more signs on that, it can be plastered with them.
Yes.
And then we'd be worse off than this, and so I'll just keep my mouth shut, and, and I'm happy enough, and mostly I'm happy to have a classier-looking. Clinic, every time it looks better, people expect better, they seem to be better there, and, and, uh, it's a very busy place, man. Yeah, and I appreciate you driving out there to check it out. Cool thing to do, and, you know, playing board stuff, you just.
Do that with any of the things going like the, well, the Blackwater, it was the psychic.
And that's right, well, that was, that was a tough one too, I don't know if the psychic's still there or not.
I certainly no sign. There's no, there's no sign.
It, it's no sign?
Yeah, they did not choose to put up a sign, if the person stole.
Yeah, somebody in that house passed away, I don't know if it was the psychic or not.
Geez.
Should have seen it coming, but. Thank you very much for your patience, and all this, this, stopping and stuff, summer was a bad time for me to organize, except that we had trouble organizing the winter too. But, um, unfortunately, I'm ready to defend that, because I used to do these things, and it was terrible, and now she does it, and she's much better.
Does anybody want copies of these, or should I just get?
I've had enough of that.
No. I'll see, I'll check in the morning if there's an actual form already existent.
Oh, okay.
If there isn't, like, I know the town has one, I don't know if the village has one or not, if they don't, then just a memo is fine.
Okay. We gotta talk to the towns and make one up then, because we gotta have something. Because what happens is people say, well, what was the, that, I think, I guess, I don't know. Tracked it down by the years.